Welcome to this evening's Muskogee Municipal Authority Meeting for May 10, 2021. Roll call.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Morgan.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Whoos.
Here.
Item number one.
Consider approval of MMA minutes of April 12, 2021, or take other necessary actions.
I hope we've had an opportunity to read the minutes. Do we have any discussion, corrections, or motion to proceed?
Move for approval.
Second.
Further discussion on the minutes. Roll call.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes. Item number two.
Consider approval of MMA claims for the month ending April 30, 2021, or take other necessary actions.
We have the claims before us. Mr. Miller?
Yes, you do have the claims before you. We do, as you see, have the money retained in our MMA capital account, as well as paying off our debt service obligations and our transfer to the general fund. We do recommend approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have a motion to approve? Any questions for Mr. Miller?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Roll call.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Same.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes. That will conclude that meeting. We will now move into the meeting of the Muskogee City Council for today, May 10, 2021. We will have the invocation by Councilor Tracy McGee, followed by the flag salute. Let us stand.
Let us all bow our hearts and minds for a moment of prayer. Heavenly Father Yahweh, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your grace and for your mercy. We ask that you guide our footsteps in your word. Give us understanding as we take on the city business. We ask for direction as we move forward. We ask all things in your Son, Yeshua Messiah. Let us say hallelujah.
Let us turn to the flag. Attention, pledge, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Morgan.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Whoos.
Here. We're all accounted for. We will now consider approval of the minutes of the special call City Council meeting for April 19, 2021, and the City Council regular session for April 26. Do we have any corrections to the minutes or a motion to approve?
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the council? Roll call.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes. We will now consider the consent agenda, which consists of items one through six. Are there any items that a counselor would like to move to the regular agenda, or do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move for approval. Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Do we have any further discussion on the consent agenda? Roll call.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes. We will now move to the regular agenda items for the City Council meeting on tonight. Item number seven.
Hold a public hearing and take action on ordinance 4118-A to rezone property addressed as 504 Kershaw Drive from R1 Single Family Residential to C2 General Commercial, and if approved, authorize staff to revise the official zoning map of the city to reflect said change, or take other necessary action.
We will now open a public hearing. Ms. Callahan.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, Council members. This is a request from William Wright, the property owner at 504 Kershaw Drive. It is a request to change the zoning classification from the R1 Single Family Residential to the C2 General Commercial. It is to allow for medical marijuana grow business. Here is the property location along Kershaw Drive. The site itself is zoned, R1 Single Family Residential, and to the north is Single Family, to the south, to the west, and then also to the east is Single Family Residential, and then farther east is agriculture, undeveloped land. This gives a broader picture of where the area, where the locations, the house is located. As I said, it's currently zoned, Single Family Residential. The request is to go to the C2 General Commercial for a medical marijuana grow operation. Staff, planning commission, and Public Works have recommended denial on the request.
We don't have anyone sign up to speak to this item. We will now close the public hearing. Do we have any discussion from the council or questions for Ms. Callahan? Do we have a motion to uphold the decision that's been presented on tonight?
I'm making a motion we uphold the decision of the planning and zoning and staff of denying this.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Callahan, I'll state a question the same as we did last week. We are consistent in our recommendation to uphold this because we have not, in past times, rezoned in residential areas for commercial interest such as this.
This is true. It doesn't comply with the future land use map, and it would be considered a spot zoning, which we have stopped doing.
Thank you. Further questions or comments from Ms. Callahan? Roll call.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes. For clarity for the audience, the motion was to reject and deny that request. Item number eight.
Hold a public hearing to discuss and accept projects completed under Oklahoma Department of Commerce Contract 17284, CDBG 18, and authorize all payments due, or take other necessary action.
We'll now open a public hearing. Ms. Callahan.
Thank you, Mayor, Council members. This is a required hearing for the closeout of a CDBG Community Development Block Grant contract. It is from the 2018 fiscal year. We received $103,887 from Department of Commerce. We did match that with 103,887. So the total project was $207,774. With that funding, we did do our last project, CDBG Project of Demolition. We completed 27, give or take, structures, and the average cost then was like, it was $6,500 per structure on the average. We do have a lot of two-stories and larger homes with basements that we are tearing down here lately. Our administration and publication fees, I count postage, copying fees, whatever I can to help with our admin fees to help make or match, were approximately $30,000. So that gives the total project cost of $207,774. Be happy to answer any questions.
No one has signed up to speak to this item. We will now close the public hearing. Do we have any questions for Ms. Callahan? If no questions, do we have a motion to accept? I move for approval. Second. Roll call.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes. Item number nine.
Hold a public hearing to discuss the Community Development Block Grant 2021 application for $228,333 under the Oklahoma Department of Commerce Small Cities Set Aside Grant Fund Program, and take other necessary action.
We'll now open a public hearing. Ms. Callahan.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As we close one out, we'll apply for more funding. However, this funding is for water projects and not demolition. What we're proposing, and as a part of the public hearing, which is the application requirement, is to give public awareness and allow for public input. And with that, I'll describe what is in our citizen participation plan that will be adopted in the next agenda item. So the total funding from the CDBG is $228,333. We are required to match it one-to-one, so we will have $228,333 to add to that. The range of activities that we're going to be doing with that, we've got three so far, proposed sites for water line replacement. There'll be one that's 780 linear feet of 12-inch water line, one that will be 5,280 feet of 8-inch water line, and 3,880 feet of 6-inch water line. Those are in three different locations. Public Works has worked very hard on this, not only helping to identify for the Community Development Block Grant project, but they also have identified a lot of water lines. I think there's a total of 30-something, and then they prioritize them, and these were also had to be within the qualifying area. So these are in number eight Cherokee is what it's identified as. It's Ward Two. Number 12 Elgin is Ward Three, and then number four Fredonia is in Ward Four. And unfortunately, sorry for Ward One, doesn't qualify in the CDBG area for eligibility. So the conceptual cost to date is $421,200, and that's without the engineering. So if we go over, then the city has funds available to meet those project costs. So we do have total funds and city match of $456,666, and 100% of those funds, because they are going to be done in the enterprise zone, which is the area for qualifying for low to moderate income. So all 100% of those funds will be to benefit low to moderate income residents. And there will not be any displacement of residents. It will be within the existing right-of-way and just a replacement of the existing failing water lines. And if there is any technical assistance or any groups that need assistance in understanding the projects, we will provide that as necessary. Once the projects get started, we can notify the neighbors in all languages that are required for the area and help them understand what the project will be going, moving forward. So that is our public hearing on the application.
We don't have anyone sign up to speak to this item. We'll now close the public hearing. Do we have any comments from the council?
Move for approval.
I do have a comment I'd like to make.
Yes, Mr. Miller.
So number one, I want to thank Tish for working on this, and forgive me, Council, I do believe, Tish, if you look at the Resolution 2859, that we may want to change some of the language. I think we may have a typo about what the use of the funds.
Oh, at that time when I did the resolution, yes, I'm sorry. I did not know that they had water lines.
So I would suggest that we make that change, so that it will say for the use of replacement of water lines rather than demolition of structures in that resolution. So as there's a motion, if that would include that. And again, I do want to say, this is an example of us identifying a priority area and directing our resources towards that. In this case, it's water leaks. So thank you, Tish. So I would recommend if there's a motion that it include that amendment.
Yeah. My motion would be to include the adjustment that's needed on the resolution.
Second.
Do we have any other discussion from the council? We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes. Item number 10.
Consider approval of the Community Development Block Grant 2021 application documents, Citizen Participation Plan, Applicant Resolution, and Leverage Resolution, Resolution Number 2859, committing up to $228,333 as leverage, all relating to the Oklahoma Department of Commerce Small Cities Set Aside Grant Fund Program, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Callahan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. This is the application for the CDBG funds that we had just had the public hearing on, and it is approval for the application documents. And with the amendment to the Resolution 2859, after 20 years of writing the documents with demolition, it was a file save-as and just moved right along. But I will change that to water line, and we can also identify those water lines in that resolutions.
And my apologies for jumping the gun. It was on this next item.
Well, it still needed to be amended. Thank you. And it's just a requirement to approve the documents that we are submitting.
Move for approval. Second.
Then moved in second. Do we have any further discussion or questions of Ms. Callahan? Roll call.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes. Item number 11.
Consider approval of ordinance number 4122-A, amending the City of Muskogee Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter Two, Administration, Article Five, Boards and Commissions, Division One, adding Section 2-137, Council Ex officio Board and Commission Membership, providing for repealer, severability, and setting an effective date, or take other necessary action.
Counselor McGee.
Good evening. Once again, I bring this item back to you tonight because I believe it's in the best interest of the council to be transparent and accountability to the people. We know that our charter has no policy on the subject. In my research going back, if you read Policy 1, Preparation of Council Policies Background, and I'm just going to read just a little bit of that, under the background, it says, "For municipalities, most rules, regulations, policy, and procedures are contained in our charter, city codes, and ordinance." And under this item, it is in neither one. It also say, "If not included in this document, state law often dictates proper policy and procedures." So I'm saying that since it's not in our charter, and everyone up here says that it default to state statute, I want Roy Tucker, if you would, Roy, if you can explain what that mean to us, that it default to state statute, please, sir. And then also, I wanted to ask, Roy, was this the best way to allow council to attend executive sessions by going through ex officio, sir?
Okay. Well, like I discussed in committee, the Oklahoma Supreme Court has held that charter cities are accorded full power of self-government, and what that means is that they have the power to enact and enforce ordinances that protect the public peace, order, health, morals, and safety of the inhabitants, even if there is a state statute which is enacted on the same subject. So for example, in the same example I gave last time, running a stop sign is illegal under state law. It's also illegal under city ordinance. We can write ordinances which are authorized by the charter, or we can write ordinances on subjects that are not referenced in the charter, but which are authorized or directed by state law. For example, the same one I used in committee, the charter does not reference smoking or vaping, but cities, under a separate statute, are authorized to regulate that in the same manner that it's regulated by the state. And so in Section 101 of the charter, we believe that the charter anticipates this conglomeration between state statute and city code. That section states that the city has all powers, privileges, and functions which by or pursuant to the Constitution and laws of the state have been or could be granted to or exercised by any city. So just because we are a charter city does not mean that we cannot avail ourselves to the other provisions within state statute, should the council so choose. Many of these ordinances cover an authorized field of regulation which is not occupied by state law and may prohibit acts which are not prohibited by state law if it is authorized by the charter. And a municipal corporation may exercise police powers on any subject of municipal concern, which are also proper for statutory regulations and where the state has not spoken. So for example, our charter requires that members of our boards and commissions serve a term, a full term, and then have to set off for a year prior to their reappointment. That is a provision specific to our charter. It is not required within state statute. And so our authority to create boards and commissions is in 703 of our charter. This grants the council the authority to establish boards and commissions, set their membership, and to delegate any duty or responsibility in conjunction with municipal activities. And so to answer the question, the second question that Counselor McGee has asked, is this the best way to allow members of council to sit into executive session by making them ex officio? Currently, neither, as Counselor McGee has stated, neither in our charter nor our ordinances do we have any provision that allows council members to sit in executive session. All executive session requirements are established by the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act. And so in order for us to allow members to sit into executive session, since the council has authority under 703 of the charter to apply established membership, then the council, by establishing themselves as ex officio members of all boards and commissions, would then allow themselves to be a part of the membership of those boards and commissions, and therefore be allowed to sit in executive session or participate in the discussion. Now, ex officio members do not have a vote on the matter, but they would be permitted to, by position, engage in the discussion and participate in executive session. Happy to answer any questions? Did I answer everything? Counselor McGee?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to make sure. So since it's not in our charter, what do we do?
Well, since it's not in our charter, we can pass an ordinance that allows council members to go into executive session. And this language has been somewhat mirrored off of a specific provision in the Open Meeting Act in 25OS 310, which allows the legislature to go into executive sessions of committees that they oversee. So for example, the chairman of the Transportation Committee of the State House would be permitted to go into executive session of the Oklahoma Department of Transportation, should one be called for. So the language in our proposed ordinance is the same, changing, of course, legislature to City of Muskogee as that which was permitted under the state statute in the Open Meeting Act.
So just had one more question. So when, just so I get an understanding, in the hope of the council as well. So when I come to you and say it's not in the charter, and you say it's default, or we look at state statute, and we find something in state as we have discovered, now we're in the, state statute is law, correct? Is that what that means?
Yeah, yeah. State statute is the law passed by the legislature and signed by the governor.
So this council can reject state law when you have nothing in your charter?
No.
Thank you, sir. I was getting at that, but you can finish if you like.
Okay, thank you. The provisions in the charter can conflict with state law on matters of local concern. But if it's state statute that is applicable to the city, and it is a matter of general concern, then it will apply over a conflicting charter provision. So for example, state elections, or municipal elections. So those elections, our charter dictates will be on a certain date. Well, state statute has been amended so many times that the date that the county election board has to hold the election is different than that's what's set in our charter. And so of course, in that instance, because elections are a matter of statewide concern, rather than a matter of local concern, we follow the provisions relating to state law on elections. So that's why we have ours when we do, in February rather than in January.
So in this situation, we wouldn't follow state law?
Well, there is no state law on the subject.
There's no state law on the subject. So if there's no state law on the subject, why did you come back and say, yes, you can do it, and go this ex officio way? I'm just trying to understand it.
Well, because under the provisions of the charter, we can set membership. And so the ultimate goal was to allow members of the council to go into executive session. So the way I figured out how to do that, in reviewing the charter, recognizing that we can establish membership, and that boards and commissions, in some cases, can go into executive session, allowing an ordinance that changes membership to include the city council's ex officio members, allows that ultimate, what you want to happen, take place. So they can then go into executive session.
My last question, and I'll be done. So when I came to you and said that it's nowhere in this charter, and you said it goes to state statute, what was you saying to me?
I was saying that if we don't have a provision that is in city charter to direct us.
And we don't, right?
That's correct. We don't. Then we look to state law to see if there is any direction within state law that says what we're looking for. Like, for example, in this one, I would look in state statute to see if there was a provision that says, for any municipal body and their boards and commissions, the members of the council can go into executive session. And nothing like that exists as it applies to public bodies, which are defined by the Open Meeting Act as cities, towns, and the like.
So this council is not a legislated body for the city?
It is a legislative body for the city. But the provision, the statute defines public, the Open Meeting Act references public bodies. And public bodies are defined as, I'll just read it to you.
Yes, thank you.
Public bodies means the governing body of all municipalities located within the state, boards of county commissioners of the county in this state, boards of public and higher education in this state, and all boards, bureaus, commissions, agencies, trustees, authorities, councils, committees, public trusts, or any entity created by a public trust, including any committees or subcommittees comprised of any members of the public trust or other legal entity receiving funds from the Rural Economic Development Plan as authorized by a state statute, task force or study groups of this state supported in whole or in part by public funds, or entrusted with the expending of public funds or administering public body, and shall include all committees and subcommittees of any public body. Public bodies shall not include the state judiciary, the council on the judicial complaints, and the legislature. So when, in the Open Meeting Act, there's any reference to public body, it does not include the legislature, right? So when we look to Section 310 in the Open Meeting Act, it specifically uses the term legislature. And the point of that is it delineates that the definition of legislature does not include public body. And so had Section 310 said, any member of a public body, then we would know that that is a directive within the Open Meeting Act that would apply to municipalities. However, as it is, it says any member of the legislature. And so that is a directive to the legislature themselves because they have exempted themselves out of all of the provisions of the Open Meeting Act, except those few things that are included, and they only relate to the legislature.
Okay. And you're taking this at the open meeting?
Uh huh, yeah. Title 25, Section 310. And then the definition that I had read was in Title 25, Section 304-1, in the definition of public body. Thank you, Roy. You're welcome.
Mr. Tucker, the question I have, and it's becoming the same question almost, is that the language that we've tried to mirror this from comes from the language given the legislature of Oklahoma authority to go into executive session pertaining to committees that they chair or serve on. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Because I was thinking, as you all were dialoguing, that as a point of future reference, what we may consider doing is establishing ourselves in a way that have those types of committees, whether it be oversight committees of existing trusts or governing bodies. And at that point, if we have those types of things set up, then maybe we would have that discussion about who can go into that executive session.
Are you talking if we were to create public trusts, any additional public trusts, or if we were to create new boards and commissions?
Yes.
For public trusts, yes. You would need to incorporate that in the trust indenture. For any boards and commissions that may be created after the fact, if this ordinance that is proposed passes, it would apply to those future boards and commissions as well by virtue of the language that we've used, of all boards, commissions, and authorities who actions are derived from the council's grant of authority.
Thank you. We have any further questions for Counselor McGee or Mr. Tucker concerning this item? Counselor McGee?
I don't have any. I move, it's on the floor for a motion.
Yes, ma'am. Was that your motion, Counselor McGee?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? We have a motion on the floor again. Do we have a second? Third time. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? The motion does not pass for lack of a second. Item number 12.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 2860, revoking the declaration of local emergency established by Resolution Number 2801. established by Resolution Number 2801 as amended, withdrawing joint city-county resolution Number 2803 dissolving the joint city-county COVID-19 task force, urging citizens to follow all current and future guidance issued by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, or take other necessary action.
I don't see Mr. Loeg in the audience, but I believe we have Mr. Dean and/or Mr. Tucker, who are going to speak to this item on tonight. I'll leave that in their discretion as to who he's pointing at, Mr. Tucker. Mr. Tucker will give us the update that was provided by the Joint City-County Task Force.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The Joint City-County COVID-19 Task Force did meet last week to decide what we wanted to recommend to the council moving forward. Because of the widespread availability of vaccinations and because of this significant drop in new cases, the task force met and is making a recommendation for the adoption of Resolution 2860. Specifically, what this resolution would do would revoke Resolution Number 2801 and lift the city's declaration of emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Additionally, the resolution would amend and revoke, thereby withdrawing the participation in the Joint City-County Resolution 2803. Additionally, the joint task force, well, the city, through this resolution, would dissolve the Joint City-County COVID-19 Task Force and would give special thanks to the members who served on that task force. Chairman Orville Loeg, Kenny Payne, Ron Dean, who is here in the audience as well, Jeff Smith, Marlon Coleman, Janie Boydston, who began serving on the committee before she was replaced as mayor, Dr. Tracy Who's, Jamie Stout, Mike Miller, Tyler Evans, and myself. And then finally, the resolution would urge citizens to continue to fall, continue to follow all current and future CDC guidance as it relates to the COVID-19 pandemic, including getting inoculated for, receiving the vaccine to prevent getting COVID-19. This did pass the task force unanimously and is brought to you at their recommendation. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but I do recommend approval.
Do we have any questions or conversation regarding item number 12?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have further comments? Mr. Miller, I see your hand going up.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I did want to discuss with the council what they see as the impact of, if this does indeed pass, on a couple of operational matters, and I want to get your feedback. I think it may be perceived among the public that we're, because we have very low numbers here in Muskogee, that we're getting a lot more back to normal. So questions will arise as to the number of people that we allow into facilities. You know, we've put caps and certain percentages on events. For instance, bull riding a couple of weeks ago was, we didn't have full capacity. So at city venues, there'll be that question as to, does this mean that we don't have any more capacity limits at our facilities? And then secondly, you know, as employer, any feedback that the council might want to give as far as, right now, our policy is if you are interacting with the public, we ask our employees to wear a mask. If they're riding in a car with another employee, we ask to wear a mask. And otherwise, they follow the CDC recommendation. So I wanted to get your feedback or thoughts as we look forward into those kind of issues that the public will be asking about. If we go down this road, it sends a signal, and I want to make sure that the actions that we take mirror the will of the council on this matter.
Discussion from the council.
Mr. Dean, did the county commissioners approve a similar resolution this morning?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Just to, just clarify, and for those at home who couldn't hear, Mr. Dean, the Board of County Commissioners also voted on a similar resolution. It was necessary. They also had a declaration of emergency, and they also joined us in Resolution 20, in our Resolution Number 2803, and then, and then also dissolving the COVID task force. So those were approved at the county commissioner level this morning, and so what we're doing is on our side of those same issues.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion regarding item number 12? Roll call.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout. Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Greed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. The item passes. Item number 13.
Receive report and discuss the status of and possible future improvements to the sports fields at Love Hat Box Sports Complex and take other necessary action.
I'm going to defer at some point some of my conversations to Mr. Miller regarding this item, but let me start by saying I had the opportunity to visit with Mr. Miller, Mr. Wilkerson, and several of their staff regarding the sporting areas at the Love Hat Box Field. Let me say, before we go into our conversation and our discussion, certainly that we understand the pressure that the Parks Department is under by those who use those fields for athletic events. We have heard their concerns, and we are ready to do what we can to try to assist our Parks Department in what they need to do to be able to improve or enhance those facilities at the Love Hat Box Sports Complex. We will be making a recommendation, and I will ask the council to ceremoniously endorse that recommendation that we give Mr. Miller and the Love Hat Box Field through the Parks Department, the authority to do what they need to do through contracts or otherwise to get the fields to where they need to be so that we can maintain them going forward. I think Mr. Wilkerson has a presentation. We'll ask you to make your presentation at this time.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I just brought a couple of photos. This just happens to be a nice one from aerial shot of the sports complex. So just a quick reminder about what we have at the sports complex. Consists of 10 baseball fields, eight softball fields, two football fields, 20 acres of soccer complex are all in the facility. Of course, there's the, in addition, in the complexes, the water park, and now the event, the new Hat Box Events Center with the RV facilities and everything. But the sports complex is, is separate, it's operated separately than those other facilities, separate from the water park, it's a different staff and a different group. I was asked to talk about what our plans are for funding at the, at the Love Hat Box. We have a grant pending with the City Muskogee Foundation. We had written a LOI that council approved for us to move forward to the foundation. They asked us to move forward with an application, and it's being considered at this time. The grant is for $115,000. It would be matched with CIP, City Muskogee CIP money for $115,000 to have a total of a $230,000 project at the, at the sports complex. This project includes work at the baseball complex. And I don't, since I don't have a pointer, the north foreplex of the baseball complex is where the littlest fields are at. And that's the least amount of work that we've done at the sports complex over the years, and that's the most utilized part of the complex. It's, it's amazing, if you think about it, it's the littlest ones that bring the most spectators. So we have a real deficiency there of seating areas, pavement, the concessions are not adequate, the restrooms are not adequate. So what we hope to do there is build a new restroom, expand and renovate our concession stands, put new concrete, new shade structures for spectators, those type of elements. And that's not all inclusive. Of course, we will spend all of that money if we're awarded the money, and hopefully we can do more than what I've just described. But, you know, long-range things, capital-wise, there's a whole list of things. This is just what we felt like was our priority in the urgent future. So we have a list of things, all the, all the complex softball, the soccer, football, as far as sports goes. If that's, and if I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to.
So, Mr. Wilkerson, I think for the audience, it's important to know, this is an impressive slide for me to see how much we have to offer. Where in close proximity to us does any other city or town have what we have to offer in terms of the number of fields, the RV pads? Where can they find that? How far would they have to go to get that?
Well, you know, it's comparative to complexes in the metropolitan area of Tulsa, you know, Bixby and Owasso and some of these complexes that built new facilities. And we've been working on ours for 20, 25 years, but it's, it's significant for Muskogee. It's appropriate for our, our use and accommodates regional and out-of-town state-type tournaments and activities as well.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions for Mr. Wilkerson, Mr. Miller? Do you have any comments? Ceremoniously speaking, I think we need to, Mr. Tucker can help me with this motion, but I'd like to make a motion. Mr. Miller was willing to take this as direction to staff. But I want the council to be on board and our support for allowing Mr. Miller and his staff to do what they need to do contractually or otherwise to get the equipment or the necessary contracts in place to upgrade our fields and get them ready for play so that for future uses, we maintain our status as a leading complex in the City of Muskogee. So that would be my, my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I heard Mark mention shade. Shade is a big issue out there as an exhibitor and a parent that has attended a lot of events. When you guys ask us to get on the tarmac and off the grass, it's extremely hot. Any type of shade, I noticed a lot up and down the soccer fields and all this, and our art, it shows trees everywhere. If we could actually get some of those, it would be amazing. The G-Fest and trying to get the heat in the summer, I'm afraid we're going to run into that with the chili cook-off in June. A tree spade would be a wonderful thing if we could get our hands on one. We have plenty of mature trees out there and probably plenty, plenty of people in the median area that would donate trees, as I would. But if we had a way to move trees around, it would be nice and add shade. But as someone who goes out to Hat Box on a regular basis to both exhibit, participate in events, and also see my children play, I would really like to see some shade added out there.
Shade's very important. We were talking about actually shade in and around the ball fields, permanent structures, either shade structures or metal canopies over some of the seating areas. But tree plantings, I'm all in favor of. We've done some significant tree planting out at the RV, the RV park was mentioned, and there's some young trees out there coming along. But there's a lot of tree planting out there that we had that, that are mature and that provides a really nice place. But soccer field's an example where we don't really have much, so maybe we can add some there.
Any other discussion for this item on tonight?
Who's going to maintain those fields out there?
City Muskogee. Our Parks and Recreation Crew maintains the fields.
Who maintain them now?
The City Muskogee. Yes, ma'am.
And they're in bad condition?
We, I wouldn't say that, no, ma'am.
Okay.
We have three full-time crew members. We hire seasonal staff to help us support it, and they've been with us for a long time. I think they're very good employees, and the more support we can give them, the better, the better job they can do.
Mr. Mayor, have you recognized?
Yes.
Who, who just runs, you said the sports complex is separate. Who, who just runs these? Do we have someone that just runs and recruits teams and recruits events just for the sports complex?
Yes, sir. We have a-
I mean, that's their sole job, is just that?
Yes.
Okay.
So we run, in example, the baseball, we, we run the Little League Baseball League, and that individual does that. And we host weekend tournaments of any kind, and he's, he's, he's the go-to person for that.
And is that a city employee?
Yes.
Okay.
Full-time city employee.
Because I really, I mean, just looking at this slide, and a lot of parents that have kids my age that kind of went through this, that, I mean, there's not, this is a great asset that our community has, that I really feel like that can draw in a lot more people. I have employees that will leave our town every weekend to go play ball somewhere else, and they go play competitive ball somewhere else. And, you know, they don't have, they go to places that don't have a water park, you know, next to their facilities, or don't have, you know, some of the things in RV parks, some of the things that we have. And I just really agree that we, as a council, need to push this sports complex more, because I feel like it could be utilized much more and actually bring in a lot more people to our area, out of town, to spend money here.
And we hope that's what the outcome of the motion is tonight.
Absolutely.
That we will do what we can to add. Certainly, three of us on this platform could not keep up this field. And so I could imagine the difficulty of three trained experts trying to maintain so much at one time. And so what this does is give them an opportunity throughout support to do what they need to do to not only improve areas that need assistance, but also make certain they're going forward as we enter other seasons, that they're ready in advance with the resources that they have. We have a motion and a second?
Move for approval.
No, we have one already.
We already have one.
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Greed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number 14.
Consider approval to receive donated funds in the amount of $1,500 for use by the Muskogee Parks and Recreation Department, or take other necessary action.
A week or so ago, I had the opportunity to speak at Arbor Day, where we took the opportunity to recognize the tree plantings that have been done by families on behalf of their loved ones. One of those individuals was so impressed with the work that had been done in the Honor Heights area regarding that event, that they came forward to make a donation to the Parks and Recreation Department for that area to continue the work that they've been doing in an amount of $1,500, and I will move that we accept that donation.
Second.
It's been properly moved, and second, do we have any other discussions? Roll call.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Greed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. The item passes. Item number 15.
Discuss and take action to direct staff to research and prepare a necessary zoning ordinance which would limit any new standalone commercial medical marijuana business from locating along the State Highway 69 corridor.
This item is, as it says, it's only to direct staff to come back with recommendations. As many of us know, along Highway 69 between Border and Ocmogee, the Oklahoma Department of Transportation is investing 30-plus million dollars between Border and Ocmogee for a seven-lane highway that's going to be all concrete. One of the things that I'm hoping that we can allow staff to do is, is see what can be done to be certain that we reserve as much of that space as possible for retail and industrial use. One of the things that is of primary concern to me and some others as well is that as we see these types of investments made along a major highway or major corridor, that we do what we can to be certain that that corridor is allowed to grow economically in terms of retail and industrial development. We're not asking staff to restrict any such type business, such as a dispensary, from going into an existing strip mall or other place that may be developed as a strip mall. But we are asking staff to come back with recommendations on what an ordinance would look like if we were to decide as a council that we wanted to use that area, especially the new area, specifically more for retail or industrial use. Do we have any questions from the council regarding asking staff to research and prepare the necessary zoning ordinance to that effect?
Move for approval?
Second.
Mr. Tucker, if there was no discussion, do we need a motion, or can we just take that as direction to staff?
We can just take it as direction to staff, Mayor.
Thank you.
Since there's clearly a consensus.
Thank you. Motion and second. Y'all understand that we, we can just take that as direction to staff?
Perfect.
Item number 16.
Discuss and take action to limit the authority of any public trust of the city to close, institute significant changes in operations of any facility held in trust for the benefit of the city, and further to direct said trust to prepare bylaws addressing the following topics: records, staff, and volunteer management, agenda presentation, public comment, as well as other topics as the council may direct which lend to efficient and transparent operations and expenditures of public monies.
Regarding item number 16, what we see on the platform tonight are the nine individuals who were elected by the people to maintain the integrity and the continuity of the public trust. We hold not only responsibility, but also accountability. It has been commonly said that those of us who have the power to delegate, no matter how great or small, must have some sense of regulation. This agenda item- This agenda item makes clear the transparent intersection between those who are elected and those who are appointed to help us maintain that trust. It puts us in harmony with the will of the people who vote and pay taxes with those who serve in public office. In 2020, those of us who are sitting up here, at least many of us, were elected by the people to this council to represent the people's interests. That means that we have to allow delegation and accountability to go hand in hand. Not owning up to our responsibility by wholesaling our delegation of authority is not what we were elected to do. We were elected to serve with some sense of transparency and a lot of sense of authority and responsibility. Tonight's agenda item solidifies our responsibilities by allowing transparency between the governing bodies such as us, as elected officials, and those we appoint to help us maintain that public trust. Having said that, I recommend approval of this item.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Do we have any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Hughes.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number seventeen.
Receive report on the status of the 2019 CIP Streets Program and take other necessary action.
Councilor McGee?
Yes, I brought this agenda item. I would like for the city manager, if he would, give us an update on, on the CIP money that the citizens had passed. Let him know I sent you my questions, if you please.
Yes. Absolutely. Thank you, Councilor McGee and Mayor, members of council. In 2019, the citizens approved the dedicated sales tax of basically a third of a cent for street maintenance and repairs. That tax went to, into effect October one, 2019. As you know, we start collecting the tax a month to two months after that is when it comes to us. The City of Muskogee Foundation had previously agreed to match the street tax up to $2 million per year for the life of the tax, which was six years. Those matching funds would become available starting July one of 2020. And so on July, in July twentieth of 2020, the MMA and the city council authorized issuing bonds to accelerate the street repair projects. And that's the first of two times we anticipate borrowing money to try and get this $24 million worth of streets done as soon as possible. We do anticipate the second borrowing later this year or next year. Now, the CIP Streets program follows the Street Committee's plan of concentrating each year's primary street work in a quadrant of town to maximize the impact as well as minimize the cost so the contractor's not moving all over town, they're in one area. This would result basically in the $6 million being spent in each of the four quadrants at a pace of one quadrant per year. The Northeast Zone, generally described as the part of town east of Main Street and north of Oakmoggi and Chandler, was scheduled for the first year of CIP funding, which is the current fiscal year of 2021. And so the first projects went out to bid and the council awarded the mill and overlay contract to Ross Construction on January eleventh, 2021. And earlier tonight, you guys amended that contract to allow us to do more work in that area. Again, still well under the $6 million amount. So those projects are underway. They're updated weekly on our city website. Right now, we're, we're getting ready to pull that up here for, for people to be able to view. And we've got a way you can zoom and click and see which streets are being worked on and what's in progress and what's not. So this is on the front page of our website and you can follow along about what the street names are and what's, what's under progress. So what's in red on the website are the streets that have been awarded already. And so those are the streets that the contract, the contractor is, is going to do. Also, if you scroll down on the website, you can see kind of a list of what those streets are and what, what's been paved and what is upcoming, right? What still has left to go. So the city's advertised for microseal work also in the Northeast Zone. Again, we're, we're planning on spending $6 million, but we've only contracted three and a half so far. Those bids have come back. They're going to be discussed in the Street Committee meeting on May twelfth. That's in this room at four o'clock, I believe. We've had a change of time, I just want to make sure people know that. And then brought to the council committee after a Street Committee discussion. That could be as soon as next Monday for consideration. Once those bids are awarded, then the progress will also be tracked on this website. So people will know what's been contracted, what's getting ready to happen, and what, what has been done so far. Aside from the microseal and the, the mill and overlay contracts and the overlay contracts that have already been awarded or put out for bid, we'll also do concrete work, traffic signalization, and striping as part of the work in each zone in fiscal year 2022, which we're planning right now and begins July one. The Street Committee plan calls for the work to begin in the northwest zone of town. That's generally the city streets west of Main Street and north of Oakmoggi. And the funding for these projects will be reflected in next year's budget. Councilor McGee, you'd asked me specifically about the amount of money that's been brought in and, and what's been spent so far.
Yes.
Our sales tax, since the beginning of the tax, is about $2.9 million. We have the $2 million from the foundation grant and we have more than $3.6 million in that initial loan. That total of proceeds is $8.5 million, which is enough to cover this first zone of $6 million. And so as you can see, when we get into the next fiscal year, we may need to borrow again to get, to be able to do the next $6 million in the next, in the northwest zone. So I feel, I'm excited that we're on pace and on target. Our contractor in the Northeast Zone is, is making very quick work of a lot of the streets. There's a lot still to go. And again, hopefully, possibly this time, as early as this time next week, we'll be discussing the next round of projects in the CIP and potentially awarding those bids. Happy to answer any questions and continue this report. Mr. Stewart's here with, if there's detailed questions. But thank you for asking for an update and, and I'm excited that we do have this tool on our website for everyone to, to follow up on our CIP.
So the citizens just need to go to the website and they'll be able to follow right along?
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else, Councilor McGee, on that regard?
That's all I needed. Thank you, sir.
Let me say to everyone and remind us of what Mr. Miller just said. The Streets Improvement Advisory Committee does meet Wednesday at four o'clock PM. We get calls all the time from residents asking which street or what the status is of their area. Certainly, that may be an opportunity for you to express that concern in addition to the website. Let me also say, and Mr. Stewart may interject or correct me if I'm wrong, many places where we see patches of asphalt are only a temporary fix until we can get to that area. Certainly, the staff has been working as much as they can in light of the ice storm that we had, which set us back several months. But what you see as a patch is only temporary. Staff is working as fast as they can with those CIP funds along with the Streets Improvement Advisory Committee to be certain that those streets are fully repaired. Thank you, Councilor McGee, for bringing that to our attention. Item number eighteen.
Consider approval of the appointment of Tracy Cole to the War Memorial Trust Authority to serve a three-year term, filling the expired term of Victor Lazzama, beginning May first, 2021, and ending April thirtieth, 2024, or take other necessary action.
Councilor McGee?
Yeah, this is my item here and I recommend Tracy Cole. I think Tracy Cole will bring to us, he's a historian and he's also into museums. So I think that he brings a perspective and diversity to that board.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Hughes.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number nineteen.
Consider approval to purchase two police canines with the included nine-week instructor course for the Muskogee Police Department from Von Lick Kennels Incorporated in the amount of $28,410, or take other necessary action.
Chief Tee Hee.
Von Lick.
Thank you. We did.
Yes, Mayor and council. We currently have three canines. We'd like to have four, or in the past, we've had four-one for each squad. We have three currently. One of those needs to be retired and will be as soon as this school is over. We're looking at sending the officer in October. He would come back with two canines. So we'd have one on each squad, one be replacing the other one. Von Lick is the top kennel in the country. The only place I think we could get better dogs from would be as we went to Germany. So that's the reason we've, we've used Von Lick for as long as I've been here and, and wish to continue to do that. Be happy to answer any questions.
Chief Tee Hee, I always say that it's important, even though it sounds repetitive, to note that canines are considered officers.
Correct. And we just had one last Friday that was recognized at the Officer Memorial that we lost in training. Yeah, that's, that's exactly right. And actually, they just recently competed in a statewide competition and finished very well. Won as high as number two with vehicle searches. And night shift uses that quite often, takes a lot of drugs and guns off the streets from that vehicle searches.
And if private residents or businesses would like to make donations to facilitate the purchase of other canines, how do they do that?
What we have done in the past is to have them do that through NBN, through Neighbors Building Neighborhoods. They can make the donation there, earmark it to us. That way, it's also a tax-deductible tool.
So those individuals and organizations who would like to make contributions towards the purchase of other canines, certainly, Kim Lynch is the Executive Director of Neighbors Building Neighborhoods. You may do so through that process. Do we have a motion?
I move for approval. Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Hughes.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds. Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number twenty.
Consider approval to purchase an electronic ticketing solution from Tyler Technologies that will outfit fifty-five patrol vehicles for the Muskogee Police Department in the amount of $113,250, or take other necessary action.
Chief Tee Hee.
Yes, this is a sole-source provider. We currently have what's called Digiticket, Digital Ticketing System. I think we started out with about fifteen of those, probably fifteen or so years ago. The unfortunate part of that is that we had, those were used 24/7. So unlike, I mean, just like anything else, if you use something nonstop ever, every day, it's going to wear out pretty quick. So and we're down to, as last count, about nine that we're using. We originally looked at a price with digital ticketing system that we currently have. And to get twenty-five units was about $90,000. We checked with Brazos, which is Tyler Technologies, and they can outfit all fifty-five cars for the 113. The sole-source port part comes in because that's currently the same system that we use for our record-keeping through our court system, as well as our record-keeping and records. And it's also compatible with the 911 center. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Before we take a motion, I'm going to allow Councilor Reynolds to return to the DS at this time. Do we have any discussion for Chief Tee Hee or a motion?
Move for approval? Second.
Been properly moved and seconded. Further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Hughes.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout. Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number twenty-one.
Receive report from the Muskogee Police Department on the new online reporting system and take other necessary action.
Chief Tee Hee.
I'm going to defer to Deputy Chief Farmer for this. He's the one that has been working on this so diligently, helping us get it in place and knows a whole lot more about it than what I do. So Deputy Chief Farmer.
Chief Farmer, welcome to the microphone.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I've got a PowerPoint for you. So what we did, this has been going on for, I don't know, many years and finally got it where we can get it online. We're caught up to like, it's the same system like Tulsa PD uses. So it's, it's a convenience for the citizens because most everybody does a lot of things online anymore. So if it's a minor city ordinance or something violation, a vandalism or something like that where there's no suspects, we don't send an officer out anymore. We're going to take that report online. So I've got a PowerPoint to kind of go through just to show you a little bit. It's called the Desk Officer Reporting System. There's several ways that you can file. So you can call the non-emergency, I can't even see that on that white wall, non-emergency line number at the 911 center and it's on there for you if you need it. So when you call and you say, hey, I need an officer for, somebody vandalized my car. I don't have any idea who did it. It happened overnight. They can actually forward you to the 1-800 number that's on the next portion here. Or you can call that number directly. So when they forward you to that number, a recording comes on and you can enter your ten-digit cell phone number. It will send you a text and then that text is a link to the website that you can also get on the city website. Can you guys see that, I hope? Okay. So it, it all goes to the same place, but there's three different ways to get there. So if you go to the city website, talk you through it here. Go to Departments, go down to the Police, click on the Police Department link. You click on the online reporting link. And then there's a online reporting page there. So it kind of walks you through some things. Basically, it tells you, make sure it's not an emergency. If it is, call 911. Did it actually happen inside the city limits? And are there any known suspects? So if there's not, then, and all that applies, you can proceed. There's a question-and-answer link there that you can click on that basically says the same thing. Call 911 if it's an emergency. If you actually need an officer, you can call the Police Department. Or if it happened outside the city limits, or if there's any known suspects. So there's several different ways that you can answer that. If you scroll down to the bottom of the page, there's a Select an Incident. And on there, that's a lot of words and that's the best I could do on one slide so you kind of get an understanding. But there's eleven things on there right now that you can report and that list will grow over the summer in the next few months as we add to it. But this was the first ones that they could get in the system really quick. So as you can see, it gives you a definition and example if you don't know exactly what, what you're looking for. I'll give you one example here. So if we have an identity theft and that's, that's what you think, you're going to click on Identity Theft. And then after you click on that, it's going to take you to that page. And that page has got some confirmation questions on it. So basically, are you reporting it for yourself? Are you a resident of the city? There's some links on there that we provide for identity theft for you to click on and go through. Make sure that you've read those. Making sure you've read the above information. Are you eighteen years old? Was there any photos or videos? Because if there isn't, there's some evidence and an officer needs to come out and collect that. If there's not, click yes. And then if there's a, a major dollar amount, then we're going to send an officer as well. Because it's live, I didn't walk you through the whole thing. But after that, it's fill in the blank. You put in your personal information, an email address, a narrative of what happened, and you click Submit a Report. Once you do that, you get an email sent back to you that has all that information on it. It's got the report number and it lets you print that off for your records for free. Within forty-eight hours, somebody at the Police Department, either Records or Investigations, is going to review that. And when they actually open it up and review it, they've got some options. So they can accept it because you've got everything you need. There may be a follow-up that they can reply and say, hey, we need a little more information to understand what we're dealing with. Or they can reject it and say, no, you didn't, officer, or maybe this didn't happen in the city, or something like that. So there's different options there. And when they do that, they will get an email and it will say specifically what the issue is and what they need to fix. Next is Traffic Collision Reports. So anytime an officer goes out and works an accident, there's a, there's a document filled out and we turn it into records. Records will create a PDF file of that document and they will put it in a folder on our server. And LexisNexis, who we're, who this company is, pulls that traffic report out. So every accident is online, available for the public to buy, or an insurance, or an attorney, or something like that. They will redact any information that needs to be done ahead of time. So that's already taken care of when they upload it. So if you do, do want to get an accident online, again, I should have started with that, but you still can come to the front desk and get a copy if you want to. This is just if you want to stay at home and do it. You click on the big red LexisNexis link, which is on the Request a Report just underneath the Online Reporting tab there. And when you do, you get this page here. So it auto fills Oklahoma and Muskogee Police Department. And you can't just, anybody can, you can't get on there and just search for a random accident. You've got to know somebody's name and where it happened at, somebody's name, and the street, or the actual report number that the officer will give you at the scene. So that way, it keeps people from just getting on there and requesting any report they want. They've got to actually know what they're talking about. Once that happens, they, the exchange is between LexisNexis, and then they cut us a fee like we would if we charged somebody at the front desk, which is usually about three dollars for the search fee and then the, the copy of the paper. So that part is live. Those fir, the first two parts are live, so the online reporting and accidents. The Request a Report, which is anything other than an accident, should be live within a week or so. We're in the final testing of it. So what that's going to allow you to do is if you do fill out an online report, or any report for that matter, you fill out a questionnaire on LexisNexis website. Somebody in Records reviews that, makes sure that you're eligible to get that report. They redact any information that, they're supposed to redact juvenile information, something like that. And then only provide what you're allowed to get if you were to come to the front desk. There is a transaction fee for that, that LexisNexis gets, and then we are allowed to get a portion of that fee as well. That's kind of real quick, but that's the down and dirty of it. I'm happy to answer any questions you got. One thing that I do want to point out is the time-saving. So your typical officer, when he goes out and takes just a generic report where there's no suspects, may take twenty or thirty minutes. As you know, we're shorthanded, just like everybody else is. We average about six or seven officers down at any given time. So any, anytime we can get an officer back in service as quick as we can helps for the emergency calls that they need to go to. So there's that, and then obviously, conven- convenience to the public. In about two weeks, we've had twenty-one cases submitted so far. So word's getting out there. We put it on Facebook and did a media release on it. So hopefully, the more attention it gets, the more use it will get. And the other point, the part is, there's about a thirteen thousand dollar a year maintenance fee that, that we have to budget for to operate it. So. Any questions?
Do we have any questions for Mr. Farmer regarding this report? Thank you, Chief Tee Hee and Chief Farmer. Item twenty-two.
Consider approval of a development and lease agreement between the City of Muskogee and Rayfield Baptist Church of Muskogee, Oklahoma, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, the city owns property adjacent to Rayfield Baptist Church and Douglas Maxie Park on South Seventh. The city currently has no dedicated off-street parking at that location. Rayfield has approached the city about bearing the cost and expense of developing and constructing a parking lot on that adjacent property, just allowing their church members to have use of that, and the, and the public to have use as well during appropriate hours when Douglas Maxie Park is open, subject to, to certain rules, of course. I want to thank, this is truly an example of a great partnership. I want to thank Rayfield Baptist for being the initiator and being willing to invest in our community. Pastor Leroy Walker's here. He may be able to answer any questions, but this is truly something on, on their part to, to move the community forward. It's going to be good for the church and good for the people that use that park, and I'm proud that we can partner in this, this sort of way. So we, we do recommend approval. Mr. Tucker has put a lot of time into getting the, the lease agreement into the form that it's in. And it's been approved already by the trustees at Rayfield. And so we'd be happy to answer any questions, and we do recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Do we have any questions of him or motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Before we go on, Pastor Walker, thank you so much for your church and its ability and desire to be able to do this. Certainly, we want to acknowledge you and the audience, and thank you for your efforts. Any other comments on tonight? Roll call.
Tracy Who's?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Merlin Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number twenty-three.
Consider approval of the recommendation by the City of Muskogee Foundation Board of Directors reappointing Ren Stratten to serve a one-year term as Board Chair beginning August first, two thousand twenty-one, and ending July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, the bylaws of the City Muskogee Foundation state that the Board Chair serves a one-year term. It is recommended by the City Muskogee Foundation Board of Directors to the City Council for approval. The foundation has nominated a slate of officers, and it does include former Mayor Ren Stratten to serve as Board Chair for the coming year. The, on behalf of the foundation, I am here to present that as their recommendation.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on item number twenty-three?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we recognize.
Yes, Mr. Van.
I think Ms. Ren Stratten would be a great, she's, she's a great leader, and she does a lot of hard work on the board. I've been on the board about a year or so now, and I think she's accessed to this board. So I definitely recommend that she definitely be on the board and is determined.
Thank you, Mr. Van.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other comments on tonight? Roll call.
Tracy Who's?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout? Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Merlin Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. We don't have any citizens having signed up to speak to us on tonight. We will go to item number twenty-four.
Consider an executive session to discuss and take possible action on the following. A, pursuant to Section three oh seven B two, Title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local Number twenty-four sixty-five, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. B, pursuant to Section three oh seven B two, Title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number fifty-seven, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. C, pursuant to Section three oh seven B two, Title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number ninety-five, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. D, pursuant to Section three oh seven C eleven, Title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss matters pertaining to economic development in the northwest quadrant of the city, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session, including possible creation of a proposal to entice a business to locate within said area. E, pursuant to Section three oh seven B four, Title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim of Brian Fuller, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. F, pursuant to Section three oh seven B four, Title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim of Sean Brown, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session.
Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Move for approval.
Second.
They're properly moved in second. Roll call.
Tracy Who's?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Merlin Coleman.
Yes, those who are not, who have not been invited to remain in executive session, we ask that you excuse yourself at this time. We will now reconvene from executive session. Roll call.
Mayor Merlin Coleman? Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Here.
Ivory Van?
Here.
Jamie Stout?
Here.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Here.
Alex Reynolds?
Here.
Stephanie Morgan?
Here.
Tracy McGee?
Here.
Tracy Who's?
Here.
Mr. Tucker.
Item twenty-four A, pursuant to Section three oh seven B two, Title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes, the City Council did convene an executive session to discuss ongoing negotiations with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local Number twenty-four sixty-five. After being briefed on the status of those ongoing negotiations, no action is necessary at this time. Item twenty-four B, pursuant to Section three oh seven B two, Title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes, the Council convened an executive session to discuss ongoing negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number fifty-seven. Again, after being briefed on the status of those negotiations, no action is necessary at this time. Item twenty-four C, pursuant to Section three oh seven B two, Title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes, the Council convened an executive session to discuss ongoing negotiations with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number ninety-five. After being briefed on the status of those ongoing negotiations, no action is necessary at this time. Item twenty-four D, pursuant to Section three oh seven C eleven, Title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes, the City Council did convene an executive session to discuss matters pertaining to economic development, in particular, to the northwest quadrant of the city. After being briefed on the status of a proposed plan to entice a business to locate within that northwest quadrant, I believe, Mayor, an appropriate motion would be to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a development agreement under the terms and with the entity as discussed in executive session.
Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Tracy Who's?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Merlin Coleman.
Yes, Mr. Tucker.
Item twenty-four E, pursuant to Section three oh seven B four, Title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes, the Council did convene an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim of Brian Fuller. After being briefed on the status of that claim and its potential settlement, I believe an appropriate motion would be to authorize the city attorney to negotiate a settlement to settle Mr. Fuller's claim within the range discussed in executive session.
Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tracy Who's?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Merlin Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Mr. Tucker.
Twenty-four F, pursuant to Section three oh seven B four, Title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes, the Council convened an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim of Sean Brown. After being briefed on the status of that claim and its potential settlement, I believe an appropriate motion would be to authorize the city attorney to negotiate a settlement of Mr. Brown's claim within the range discussed in executive session.
Do we have a motion on item number F?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Roll call.
Tracy Who's?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs? Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Merlin Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number twenty-five.
Consider approval of Resolution Number twenty-eight fifty-six regarding the participation in the OMAG recognition program and receive a presentation from Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group on best practices for Oklahoma municipalities and their governing bodies, and take other necessary action.
Just before I turn the floor over to Mr. Tucker, let me say to our colleagues from OMAG, certainly, we are grateful for your patience with us on tonight. We don't believe that you intentionally want to be gluttons for punishment, but thank you for enduring our timeframe and the agenda items that we had before you presented on tonight. Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like to invite our friends from OMAG. I know David Weatherford is here to present training on our City Council Handbook, as well as some rules relating to ethics, the open meeting, and things like that. But I think, David, you said that. Dory, hi, Dory.
With OMAG. Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing us to take your time tonight and to be a part of the recognition program. I think this is your fourth year, is that correct? Fourth year. So I know you know David and Aubrey Who's his right hand. But, so David will, David's been a city attorney since nineteen eighty-nine. He's worked with OMAG for ten years. These two travel the state. They see at least sixty cities a year after hours, so they work a lot of long hours, and we really appreciate them. And so I'm going to turn it over to, to David so he can get started and let you all get home at a decent time.
Mayor, thanks for having us. You are very privileged because Dory is with us. And those of you who don't know Dory, she's one of the longest-tenured OMAG employees. She started when she was three. But Dory is known statewide. Every place we go, seems like everyone knows Dory, and you usually get stuck with Bill Tackett, the B Team. But tonight, you have really one of the best long-term employees of OMAG with us, and it's always a privilege to, to come to one of these with, with Dory with us. This program was created to provide onsite training for city councils. It's, it's the only program of its kind. We've been doing it for, for about ten years. We've been to two hundred cities in Oklahoma. As you can imagine, a lot of them much smaller than Muskogee, but a few that are larger. It is designed to give you some information about what's going on in the rest of the state. The bad news about it is you're going to get to take a test, and we need your honest feedback because it's, it's to evaluate or to allow you to evaluate where you are. The test is a stability test, and it's to measure how stable you are as a government. We don't need names. We just need a score sheet. Some of you have participated in this in the past. We have a database that has statewide averages and scores from all over the place. All we ask is that you give an honest opinion of how you think you're doing on each of these ten areas of city government that we think are the ten things you as elected officials should be looking at to measure how you're doing. Your rates and policy from OMAG are, will not be affected. Let me explain each question before you give a score. And, and let's work through it and get some idea of how Muskogee's doing so that you can be better informed as to where you should place your emphasis. Okay, the test, again, was created by a number of municipal officials. We've been giving this for ten years. We have thousands and thousands of responses, and lots and lots of scores we can compare to. So it's important. The first question's the most important. How financially stable is the city of Muskogee? A perfect score of ten is a city that has a written financial policy that sets some goals and sets a reserve, and you fully fund that reserve policy. So that would be a ten. We have a reserve policy, and we fully fund it. And I'm going to, I'm going to cheat a little bit on this one because some of you may be new, and you may or may not know this. You have the best reserve policy in the state. And I know that because I've seen it. I, I had heard about it, and I asked Roy for it a year or so ago. I don't know if that, was that the first one you approved?
This was the most recent one.
Is that the first time you'd had a formal?
No.
Okay. There are very few cities in Oklahoma that have a reserve policy. And I don't know how close you are to fully funding your goals. Close, Mike? That's a great sign. That, that policy came about because in working with Frank Crawford, the top financial advisor for cities in Oklahoma, he's recommended that cities have this type of policy. Many, most do not. I remember doing this presentation at a city that's a county-seat-sized city, and having a council member raise their hand and say, I have no idea if we have a financial policy. I've never once seen a financial statement of the city or any financial report of any type. And he said he'd only been on council twelve years. Never once. So a part of the test is to talk about what standards should exist. And to help with your score on this one, you guys have done a great job with your policy. You've done such a good job with it. We've shared it with lots of others. We've put it on some websites, and we've told others around the state that they should look to Muskogee as an example of what can be done in setting a financial reserve policy. And Mayor, I think it's important for you and the council to know that you are setting the example for the rest of the state on this topic. So I hope you get a good score.
Eleven.
Number two is how stable is the governing body? We see that elected officials, just like you, come and go and change just because it's a group of people that will change over time. A high score for a city is a group that is well-informed, engaged. If you have turnover, you attract very good people who want to serve, and it's considered an honor and a privilege to serve on the city council. That should be our goal. A low score is you look around at those sitting around you, and you say, I wish we could throw them all out and start over. We've been in cities in which everyone sitting at the counter wrote down a one. One even asked, can I write a zero? And they were, they were evaluating themselves, and that happens in some cities. But our goal is, should be, to have good, well-engaged people who, who have the community interest in mind and want to achieve things to make your city better. So give it a score of how you rate how well the governing body is doing. Number three, however, your meetings. Should be enjoyable. You should look for, forward to them. Should be an important part of your work. And I could give a score from sitting through your meeting because I've sat through hundreds and hundreds, almost two thousand meetings statewide now, and I would give you a very good score. I hope you do, because you have a very good process in how you conduct your meetings. A low score is those cities in which there's lots of arguing, the staff is at odds with the elected officials, the elected officials that are at odds with each other, and nothing gets accomplished. And we've sat through those meetings. So evaluate how well you're handling your meetings, because it is an important part of your work. And for those cities we go to in which they have a low score, I usually ask a very simple question. Then why do you keep doing it that way? This is one that is one hundred percent within your control. You get to dictate the quality of your meetings, you as the elected officials. Part four, and Muskogee's a big city with lots of employees. How do you rate your workforce? A high score is that we have employees who work hard, who care about our city. If we have turnover, we attract good people. It's considered an honor to work for the city. As elected officials, that should be our goal. As elected officials, that should be our goal. We want it to be a great place to work because we want those employees to be ambassadors for what we're doing and what we're trying to accomplish. A low score is that place, that city that has just constant turnover, has a hard time hiring anyone, is getting sued a lot, constantly at odds, employees at odds with each other and then employees at odds with the elected officials. And we see that in some places. So give a score, someplace between one and ten. How do you rate your overall workforce? And it's hard to do, especially hard in a city manager city where you have limited involvement. Part five, what's the image of the city? Image of the city as a governmental body. A high score is that in the region, we're considered a leader. The public looks to us to help solve our problems. If there are issues that need to be dealt with, they trust us to make good decisions. That should be our goal as an image of our organization and as a government. A low score is the opposite. No one trusts us to make wise choices. No one looks to us to be a leader and we're constantly being criticized. You should not base this score on what you read on Facebook because everyone has a disgruntled group someplace. But what's the image of Muskogee as a governmental entity? And think about that because we want it to be high. That should be our goal. Part six, how do we handle a crisis? If there's a tornado or a flood or some other natural disaster, how well does the city deal with it? Government exists in part to deal with those disasters that come along because that's who the public looks to respond. So a high score is we're well-prepared. We know what to do. We rely on each other and we handle it well. A low score is we live every day in crisis. I have no idea what I'm supposed to do if something like that happens. Okay? Number seven, economic development. We know that in metro areas, in high-traffic areas, the scores are higher. We know that in rural western Oklahoma areas, the scores are lower. A high score in economic development means your city is actively engaged in economic development projects. A low score is those cities who have chosen not to be involved. And we see some of those. They make the conscious decision that this is not a role of government. Private business should take care of it entirely and we're not going to take an active role. So how active are you in economic development projects? Give a score between one and ten and we'll have some idea of how active you are. Part eight, planning and goal-setting as an organization. How well do we map out the future? I probably have told some of you who have been here before, when I've been here, you have a very unique role in planning and goal-setting because the public has entrusted you to determine Muskogee's future. Lots of people in your city have an opinion about it. But the group of you have been elected to map out that future, to determine where Muskogee's going to be in five years or ten years or twenty years. And there's no one else in the city who can do that but the group of you. Really, one of your most important jobs to plan that long-range, what do we want Muskogee to be in the future? So how well do we do that? Do we meet on a regular basis? Do we have committees? Do we put thought into what we want Muskogee to be in five years or ten years or twenty years or fifty years? Because if you don't do it, I'd submit, no one is doing it. And we see a lot of cities in which there's just no planning and no goal-setting for where they want their city to go. They live day-to-day. Part nine, and this is not directed at your city manager, it's upper management of the city. How well's the administration of the city? How stable is it? Because we've been to cities, we went to a city last year that had eight city managers in two years. And I could stand in front of them and say, "It's not a city manager problem. If you've had eight in two years, you couldn't have made that many bad hires. There's something else wrong." Our goal should be to have stable management. And this is not directed at the city manager. This is the upper management of the city. How stable is it? A high score means we attract and keep very good people in upper management because our governmental business will be more stable over the long term if we do that. A low score is those cities who have constant turnover whether they need to or not. And when we go to those cities that have that constant turnover, we can't fix the other problems and they can't address the other problems until they figure out what's causing that. So give Muskogee a score on how are we doing on upper management? And I know it always makes the manager uncomfortable to talk about it, but you got to talk about it and you've got to evaluate it and see how you're doing. And again, it's not personal in this question to the manager. It's the upper management of the city. And question number ten is how well do we communicate? A lot of problems in a lot of cities are caused by the failure to share information. A high score is I'm getting all the information I need to make a decision on the things that come before me. A low score is I wish somebody'd tell me what's going on around here. And we see that in some cities. So those are the ten questions. We'll gather those. We don't need individual names. We'll get a composite score back to Mike and give you an idea of how you're doing. It should not be for purposes of judging. It should be for the purposes of evaluating to see how can we do better. And I think that's, it's been used that way in a lot of cities to try to find a way to make it better. Some of you have seen some of these scores before. I like to use them as an example. If we look at scores from around the state, it scares me to death that we've seen a city that's ten to twenty thousand, ten to twenty thousand population and they had a composite score of twelve, which means they barely got above a one in each category. To me, the most interesting one is the city over twenty thousand that scored a fifty-one, which is a failing score. They choose to be that way. They also are the city that has more claims than any other city in Oklahoma that are processed through OMAG because they continue to be that way.
Is this on a hundred-point scale?
On a hundred-point scale, yes. So a twelve out of a hundred in a city ten to twenty thousand, which is a county seat-sized city, is scary. A fifty-one out of a hundred in a city over twenty thousand, which is a regional city, is a scary thought, isn't it? That we can't do better than that. And the goal is to do better than that. I've told some of you before, we've put together a series of surveys over the years to ask, "How can we make our city better?" And so we have a top-ten list, top-ten things you can do to improve your city. And it really is from officials around the state just like you. These are the things they suggest you should do to make your city better. Your meetings are business meetings. It's not a political event or a debate class or a social gathering. You're the board of directors of a municipal corporation. You're running, especially in Muskogee, a huge business. And it really is a business enterprise in which you're the board of director, similar to the board of directors at Walmart. You're setting long-range policy and you're making important decisions for the organization going forward. Sorry, skipped ahead. Number nine, you should have good meeting habits. If you have board members who misbehave and have bad habits at meetings, it's up to you to get that under control before it goes out of control. And just have good meeting habits. Have a plan when you show up. Do your homework. Ask the hard questions in private. There's nothing wrong with that. You should have the habit of doing that. If there's some uncertainty about something on the agenda, call your city manager and ask in advance. It's not plain gotcha at meetings, which we see in some places. Promote your city. You help define your city's reputation. I'm convinced every city has a reputation just like individuals and you want yours in Muskogee to be as best. You can make it. Publicly defend your city employees. They get criticized every day and it's something you probably don't think a lot about. The person dealing with utility billing is getting criticized every single day by customers. It's just the nature of customer service. When we take surveys of city employees, the number-one answer we get about what's wrong with their job is the public criticism and lack of appreciation. Overwhelmingly, in public service, that's the answer. Probably your city manager's getting criticized every single day from someone in the public. It's just the nature of the job. And we've been in cities in which some in the public will say, "So what? They're just public employees." And we want it to be more than that. You have an obligation to help it be more than that. So don't be a part of that criticism. That's so easy. And simple appreciation means something. It really does. Appreciation of what your employees do will mean more than what you pay. Set long-range policy goals. Again, top-ten things you can do to make your city better. Most important role is to identify the direction of the city. Number four, understand your limited role. Not everything's your business, just like Roy and I as city attorneys. And some things are none of our business. It's not our job to have an opinion about it. It's not our job to get involved in it. Probably no one has told some of you if you're new, but some things are none of your business. There may be a time you go to the manager and say, "What happened to my neighbor's son Joey who used to work for the city and why doesn't he work for the city anymore?" And he may have to say, "I wish I could tell you, but I can't." It may be that Joey flunked a drug test. It may be that he's under investigation for something. It may be that it's none of your business because not everything is your business. And it's hard for your staff to tell you that. I get to leave town, so I get to tell you that. Some things are none of your business. Understand what your role is and what your job is and do it well and let others do their job well. I am always amazed when we go to cities and, again, this is not anything directed at you at all. Don't take it that way. I'm amazed then when we go to cities and city councils want to be involved in personnel. Why do you want to do that of all things? There are much more important things you should be doing than getting involved in day-to-day operations and day-to-day personnel. Let the guy that gets paid doing that handle it because no one enjoys that part of the job. Lead by example. Ethics and conduct matter. Serve with dignity. I am convinced that good city councils with good people attract good people to serve with them. And the opposite is true, too. Bad city councils with people with bad intentions attract others who want to be a part of that. So you have a tremendous responsibility to set a long-range example for Muskogee because you want to perpetuate the organization to be great. And that is a part of your role. Good people will want to serve if you set a good example. Be responsive to the public. Get input. Protect the interest of everyone. Know what the public needs. That's an important part of your job. And the number-one thing you can do to make Muskogee better is find a way to work as a team. When we've taken surveys, overwhelmingly, that is the answer and the difference between successful and unsuccessful cities. Those who work well as a team are on the same page, have clear goals, work toward those common goals, will be successful. And those who don't won't. And it really is that simple. It's no different than basketball. We don't always see the most talented team win. We see the best team win. And it really is an important part of what you do as a group. Find a way to work well with each other. And if you do that, you'll be successful. So we encourage you to do that. Dory left out the best part. OMAG is a part of this program for listening to us and coming to see you once a year. We'll pay you ten thousand dollars for going through this training, payable to the city. You can use it for any lawful purpose. It's not a credit on your bill. It's an actual check that will show up. So I encourage you to engage annually. It's a part of what OMAG does because they really believe the best-run cities are those in which the councils work well together or engage with each other. And find a way to work through their differences. Next is questions. I think the last time I came here, we did this completely different. I think Bill may have been here without me the most recent time. The time before, we came without a script and I just talked and asked council members to talk about what their goals were. I don't really have a set script of anything I wanted to cover under questions other than to give you an opportunity to ask anything you want to ask or any comments of us or any information we can get you that would help. Mayor or anyone else?
Questions for the presentation?
I have a question.
Sure.
In our situation, you was here tonight, you heard it. Can you explain it?
What part of it? The meeting process or?
State statute. What is that when you don't have it in your charter?
Oh, that discussion, I agreed with Roy's analysis. I'm a city attorney in Sand Springs, so if the charter doesn't specifically address something, you're governed by state statute. If the statute doesn't cover it, it's up to you to regulate it how you see fit. So I don't know the purpose of why you were doing that or don't know any background. We didn't, we don't, we usually go into cities cold because I don't want it to come across as us trying to affect how you vote or what you do or judging you. But I, all I know about that issue is what I heard tonight and I thought Roy covered it the same way I would have covered it as far as.
So you saying that there's no statute, then if there's, if you don't have anything and state statute don't have anything, you don't have nothing?
You have the ability to regulate it then. Yes. So it's up to you what you want to do and whether you should or not. You know, isn't it amazing as a country, we still debate this issue of how much government is too much? And that really is the question you're getting to, is how much more government should we have? And fortunately, that's up to the group of you to answer. Shouldn't be up to the attorneys. The attorney question is, can you do it, not should you do it? So as far as the answers, Roy's, they were exactly the way I would have answered it.
So that's the loophole, right?
It is a little bit. But don't we have that as a country? Don't we still struggle with that question? How much government do we want? How much do we want to regulate things? And fortunately, people are willing to serve in elected jobs. They get to answer that. And you guys do. So good question. Thanks. My one question for you, for you I would like you to think about is what can you do to make your service more enjoyable? Because it's an important part of what all of you should be doing. It should be an enjoyable process as staff members. And I think of myself as a staff member, the worst comment we ever get from an elected official is that really good elected official who just says, "You know, I don't think I want to run again because I didn't enjoy it enough." And that's a horrible thing for an organization, isn't it? We need, we need the group of you to enjoy what you're doing here so you will continue to serve and make Muskogee better. Every city needs that because it's hard to get good people to serve these days. So think about that. What would it take? I would challenge you to get with Mike and respond to him. What would it take to make it more enjoyable? And we probably don't spend enough time on that topic, but I think it's an important one for each of you. Find a way to make your service enjoyable. And some of it is how do we digest all the information? How do we become more efficient? You guys have great meetings, having sat through your meeting, your mayors, as well as any mayor we've been to in running the meeting. So you've got a great opportunity and a good group that can make it better, but always challenge yourself, how do we make it better? How do we find a way to enjoy this more?
David, one of the questions I have, with COVID came new policy from the state level regarding being able to call in, participate in meetings by Zoom. That also allowed counselors to participate around the state in executive session by Zoom or otherwise. So my question is, since we have advantage taken of using technology in executive session, when we are not online or not participating by Zoom, should we or should not be using our cell phones? Because that comes up every year. I remember when Councilman Gully was on the council, he would ask the same question every time OMAG would present. So it's been a long, long time. So I think any of us participated in the, what's it called, Councilman? We go once a year.
The new official training.
New officials training. So we might need a refresher on that, especially in light of the fact that during COVID, we had more access to technology.
Great. Great question. Tough issue. Let me go back. I've been doing this for thirty years. When I first started, I was told that I should keep notes of executive session because those would be the minutes of the executive session. So I, as the city attorney, should keep notes. I should keep those in a file in my office. I should never make them public until somebody ordered me to. And I should maintain those notes because they were important. There are some cities who record their executive session. Over the years, my opinion changed drastically. I am strongly of the opinion, I do not keep any notes of any executive session, would not allow any recording of any executive session under any circumstance. And the minutes of the executive session are what show up on your agenda that you actually vote on, that you went into executive session, the list of the topics. Because anything short of that is not an official minute unless you vote on it. And unless you transcribe it and then vote on it, it really means nothing. So I would assume you do what we mostly do, same standard now. You approve. And it really has been training on a real simple question. We, for years, had city clerks and city attorneys, when asked, "Do you keep minutes of executive session?" They would say, "No." And the truthful answer is, "Yeah." And the truthful answer is, "Yes, you do." You have minutes of, who made the motion, who seconded it, what was discussed in the executive session. And 99% of the time, no action was taken as a result of the executive session, or you voted in public. Those are the minutes of the executive session. The answer is, "Yes, we do keep minutes of the executive session," and those are the only minutes. No one should be recording them, cellphones shouldn't be used, because all you're doing is creating evidence that's going to make life miserable for someone or everyone. And it is not an official act. I, I have seen cities who have dealt with the issue of what to do if someone discloses something from executive session. There have been cities who have precluded some of their own members from attending future executive sessions because of that. I don't know if you use the same confidentiality form, but we have a confidentiality form that...
We adopted it from you, yes.
Okay, we stole it from someone else. Our best work comes from what we can steal from someone else. But part of what we do is to, to share some of those standards. That's a difficult issue. And I've been involved with a city in, in which one of the members refused to recognize the confidentiality of executive session. It is statutory that we do it, and you've got to follow the rules. And you, as a governing body, get to control that. And if someone violates it, you get to deal with it. So, I think that's important. I think, Mayor, I think it's exactly right. If someone is recording it when they shouldn't, or using their cellphone when they shouldn't, it's a problem that needs to be dealt with.
And that is something that's by state statute.
It is confidential by statute, by going into executive session, as is intended. And, and really, I think it's more basic. Let's, let's think of it this way. It's no different than any, any other privilege. You, as a group, have, have an attorney-client privilege to talk with your attorney. That's a privilege that belongs to the city. None of you individually have the right to waive that and violate it. It belongs to the city as a group, not any of you individually. And if you violate that, you are violating that duty that you have to keep confidential what the group of you owns. So, I think it really is, if you think of it that way, it becomes easy. It is a, a privilege that belongs to the group. And you have no right, as an individual, to, to violate that privilege.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks again.
Question.
Sure.
I was going to say, what has helped me up here as a council, councilman? It was a gentleman, he was on the council about 23 years, Mr. Perkins. He always told me, "Ivy, when you get on the council, go to the National League of Cities." So ever since I've been on the council, it's been working on my eighth year. And that's one thing I've been going to every single year. The National League of Cities, National League of Cities for the Black Caucus, and OML. I go to three of those, ever since I've been on this council. Met a lot of city managers, met a lot of city councilmen, and I've met a lot of mayors. So it's good to have those connections in other cities.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's just, you know, that has helped me a lot. Another thing is, as a councilman, anybody that calls my phone, I, I go out, I meet that person. Now, we got a work order system here, that's fine. But when I put that work order in, I want to make sure I'm telling that work order the truth. So I go out and meet these people, and when the, I get a complete on the work order, that work order, it says complete, I'm going to see if it's complete. But that's the time I take out. In my day, we had no pay.
Well, thank you for your service and the leadership to the others, because one of the things we do a poor job of is learning from experienced council members what has worked. We're in an era in city government, in all government, in which there's a lot of mentality of, "Throw them all out and start over." And it's an interesting stat, that since 2008, incumbents win at half the rate they used to in municipal elections. Should be a scary stat for us. Your job is much harder than it used to be. Government used to be more stable. But there's so much of an attitude of just throw them all out and start over. And so it's important to have that public contact and be responsive. But also important to know what's going on with your colleagues. And, and I think that's a, a great way to do that. We all should encourage each of you to have contact of what's going on in other cities. It's important to recognize some cities just do things differently. By a charter, or form of government, or something may make them different than us. And that's why I, I never want to come into a city and say, "Boy, this is the way you have to do it." Because Muskogee is unique to the rest of the world, based on your charter and how you do things. And that's a good thing. You have the ability to control that. But it is important to get ideas from what others are doing. And OML and National League of Cities are great, great places. Being involved with those is, is good information for everyone.
Do we have another questions for Mr. Weatherford? Is there anything else you'd like to answer?
No, thanks for, thanks for having us, and thanks to O-MAG. And, and again, if we're here next year and Bill Tackett is, is with me, remind him that the A-Team came this year. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tucker?
We need an agenda, excuse me, we need an action to approve Resolution 2856.
May for approval?
Second.
It's been properly moved and second discussion. Pro call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout. Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Greed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
The item passes. We are adjourned. Council, thank you for your time.